Hey. Again, here we are. The road to success, my boy. Starbucks. Where you going? There you go. God's a big guy, dog. How you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Like what I like. Yeah. What's your name?
Demonte.
Demonte, nice to meet you, man. King Griffin.
Yes, sir.
Good friends with Keith, my running mate back in the day.
Yes, sir.
Got all kinds of trouble.
Yes, sir. A little bit, a little bit.
But then, I think it's cool because we're all doing very good.
Yeah.
It's really a blessing.
Yes, sir.
Baytown is the reason why, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think there's a lot, there's a lot of statistics around these other cities, but yeah, Baytown, we have a lot of, we got a lot of successful people. For the last few years, school district, you know.
Yeah.
In the city, but yeah. Let me sit down.
Come on, come on.
I want to get something to have.
Yeah. What you get, what you get? I get what you get. Grab your chair. We'll sit on this side. All right.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ask, shoot away.
You said you didn't seem, you know, one of the things that's successful. Politics or just?
It can be too simple.
Well, I can't speak for everybody, but for me, before food, what I do, what I do comes down to my God. I feel it's, it's success really, in anything, is going to take effort, hard work, discipline. Above all that, it has to come, it has to be an internal motivation. It can't be, you know, the external motivations, money, women. The motivation for truth, to be truly successful, has to come from something inside you, deep down in your heart. Decide who you're going to be. That's what's important, setting your core values and sticking to them, no matter how tempting it may be to deviate from your core values and pursue self-pleasantries. I consider myself to be a leader for even relationships, but all, everything I do in life, even if I don't have an immediate title, I do the lead. By lead, I really mean serving others. You have coworkers, being there for your coworkers, showing up on time at work, doing your job, maybe going to X and Y office, colleagues, being a team player. And that's something we learn through sports.
Yeah, yeah. Started the coach, all of them, Cunningham, all of them, Croons.
Really being part of teams, developing, you know, developing camaraderie with each other. And that's knowing, that's doing your best because you know the person next to you is going to be doing their best. And even if you don't know, you know, you giving everything to God. And you're looking to inspire the next person to step up. So what it is sometimes is more of not really looking at what the other person is doing, but knowing, doing everything you can inside yourself to make things better, whatever you do. Again, I don't have a thought, what I'm in right now is politics, I'm in public service.
Yeah.
I do advocate politics and that's part of the job. Think of like a, like a person who builds houses, like, you know, they're a house builder, they're a building, but they do windows, but you know, they, they also build roofs, but that doesn't define, that doesn't define who they are. Roofs is one part of your job, one part of it.
Yeah.
And you know, public service, politics is part of the, part of the ultimate, part of city politics, city government, and government in general. But I think that's something that's lost since in society. Society believes that our government, our, our, well, it's run by politicians. And that, that may be true, but that's not how it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be run by people who want to serve and do what's right for the greater good of our country, for the greater good of our state. So whatever you do, attack it with a servant's heart. Attack it, how can I, what can I do to make the situation better? Being able to go into a situation and go with attitude that whatever happens, I'm going to leave the situation better than how I made it. So go on to something and leave it in a bad condition. And I could say that a lot, my time was working and I've been a security manager for thirteen years. Anytime I took the helmet, something I could, I could truly say I've left, overall, I've left situations better, I've left people better than what I left, better than the way I met them. They have jobs, they moved on, they're, they've used what I named them as stepping stone. But it's not really so much what I gave, but they took it. And they decided they're going to use that stepping stone. It's really, it's really good to see people, you know, decide to take advantage of the opportunity. Opportunity going to come in different forms, they're going to come in the forms of different people, people that you don't see individually getting along with. They're going to come in those kind of, those kind of forms. And it's so important to have a open heart and open mind to the way God sends opportunities into your life. Because it's, it's not going to be in the way you probably may think or have in your mind, how it's going to be. So I bounce off a little place, I'll probably give you something helpful with. How old are you? Sixteen? What school were you going to? Involved in anything, any sports? So you know, right, running the race, right? Setting the tone, setting the base, and, and the hard work it takes. It's good that there's balls and something to be learning. Anything that's going to be successful, it takes, you know, it takes this one, it's hard work, it takes obsession, wanting to be the best, right? So I guess you, because you're on a team, so you want to run the race for your team, so.
Yeah, the good thing.
Any other questions? More about my story or? My, my goal is, so my parents moved here in nineteen eighty-three. I'm living in New York City. I'm telling you the story so you understand my goal. One of the reasons I moved here is my, my oldest brother, I was, I was a toddler at the time, but my oldest brother, we lived in, in New York where the public school system wasn't all that great. And in order to get a really good education, you had to get, you had to be top dollar for a private school to catch this system, education. My brother was still in the public school, it, it just wasn't conducive to getting an education, he was getting, he was always getting fights. I think one story ended with my brother fighting twelve people up, up to two apartments complex where my parents lived. I think when my dad said that, that's kind of what did it for them. At the time, my uncle, my mom's sister was working down there, she was an ironworker. He actually worked on the, on the statue, very popular work. I looked for a picture of him, he's actually sitting on Bay Town, remember these crowns outside. I mean, it's, it's a dope video.
Yeah.
He's sitting on Bay Town, it's fun to climb, it's cool, but. But anyway, he said, you know, he told my parents to come to Bay Town, it's a good place to recognize family. My dad, he, my mom and my dad, my mom was in nursing, she came here, she worked for Humana. I don't, you don't even know about Humana.
Yeah, yeah. Humana Health.
Medical over here, over there on one forty-six, that's what Goose Creek owns that building now. But that was, that was a hospital back in the early eighties. And my dad, he started working at the YMCA and he was janitor. And then for several years for, for Tommy Hathaway, you don't know either, he owned a bunch of grocery stores here in Baytown for a long period of time. You remember Hathaway? My dad was a manager of a couple of stores and he also managed a few Safeway Foods.
Yeah, I like Safeway. I was close to the Stakeway, a west baker down over here, next to the village.
Yeah, he actually managed the one, Waverly over there off of, where the other food time is on.
Decker.
Decker.
Yeah.
And then he managed some of Pasadena. And then he wound up getting into the plants. He met a friend at church, he started as a general laborer, ground up, general laborer. Finished his career as instrumentation tech, he got his, uh, Brown and Root helped him go to college, get a degree, get a trade.
Okay.
Finished as instrumentation tech, making really good money. And I said that all to say this, is, you know, what Baytown was, my family was, the same place, the race, I think, relatively same place. It's a good place economically, because of the economics here and economic opportunities here. My dad reinvited himself in a way where he was able to provide for us in a really good way, same me and my mother. So I, I ran because I, I saw some of that stuff starting to slip away. I wanted to, I'm running to, I ran to, actually, it found me. I saw it, there's a lot of frustration going on, it was twenty twenty. It kind of found me because I was talking to, I was talking to friends, I was expressing my concerns about.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, damn, the neighbors are starting to look.
I know a lot, a lot on Facebook, I seen the posts, I say, Griff busts. I seen you active, I was like Griff doing something in the community, for real. I don't know what he got planned, but he doing it, he doing something. Making a change.
Yeah, there was definitely an internal pride for it. And every time I see stuff, I always think about what am I, what can I do? I don't, I don't look, I don't, I try not to point fingers, this is not, this is not me virtue signaling, this is because of my faith. My faith is always constantly to take internal acceptance of where am I at in this space? What am I doing to make things different? I know, I don't point, when things happen, I don't point at, I don't point at, I don't point at. First school, I was like, where, where was I?
Yeah.
What was I doing? So it was, it was those moments, these, these moments that I had, oh my God, that really caused, you know, caused, I don't know, being the top of people raised concern, people, people started beginning to reach out to me. So what do you think about running for city council? At first, the idea scared me, you know? It was like, it's supposed to scare you, like, that's another thing about success, you're going to, if you want to get on about success, you're going to have to do things that are mission.
You got to push yourself, yeah.
It's the fear.
That's your real test.
Yeah, you have to overcome your own fears and challenge yourself to overcome those fears and play fast. That's what I did, I, it was a lot of apprehension. But just the idea of putting yourself out there, being vulnerable alone is hard enough. But when I set up, I, I prayed about it, I really did, and I had God to, to correct my path. I started out with a hundred dollar donation from a friend. And I signed my name to run. By the time it was all said and done, I had like twenty seven hundred dollars in campaign contributions, which is kind of big for a city council person to go for a hundred dollars and a budget support. It happened because I had the faith to fit myself in so a lot of uncomfortable situations, situations I have never been in. You know, the rest of the history, I, I wound up winning, I wound up doing some things that is unheard of, well, not a totally unheard of, but uncommon. It's uncommon to, to win an election against a incumbent, that somebody's already seen in place. These are people win elections that are for vacated seats. My seat, the seat I was running for was not vacated, the person was running, was still running for the seat. And also, won by, what I've been told is the largest votes in Baytown history for an election for a councilperson. So it was like twelve, one hundred, twelve votes and twenty-five votes. So I, I give all the credit to God.
Yeah.
Oh, I had this political strategy and it was, I had to, it was not.
Yeah, none of that.
It was faith, it was like, God, I don't know what you want me to do out of it, but I'm going to take, I'm taking one foot in front of the other.
Yeah.
I'm following the direction and I'm, I'm going to be open to the people that you send along my way. And I'm going to trust that, I'm going to trust you, that, that I can.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what I did. And God did you that, he said, he said, good people and, and, so really good friendships, I believe friendships that will last a long time through this process. You know, I, I've been serving ever since, and one thing I promise my, my constituents is that when my phone rings or they send me an email, or pick up the phone and it rings, I'm going to respond to their email in a timely manner. And I'm going to respond and hopefully to the, you can't promise I'll solve all the issues, but what I promise is that I will be there, whether I'm called on. I, I will give an answer, whether it's an answer they like or not like, but I will give an answer. That's what I've been so far and that's what I strive to put forward is that person to give an answer and be there. And also promote the beautiful neighborhoods that we have and to preserve them as we move forward. As Baytown moves forward to make sure we don't lose what this town always was for my, my family. That's, that's that, that's, I guess that's a, that's a long answer, a long answer.
It's a lot of history, a lot of movement, a lot of movement.
So that's, yeah, that question really, really takes understanding of history. My parents, I'm a first generation Caribbean, uh, Caribbean American, I'm an American, I was born in the United States, I love this country. That's another reason why I won, I love America, I love what it's done for, I love what it represents for my family. My family within the first, it didn't even take a first generation for my family to really be successful, doctors in my family, psychologists, teachers, professionals, ironworkers, and all kinds of industry in my family. And I'm really, it's really honored to be able to be part of what my family, what my family's done here, you know, within the first thirty, forty years of living in this really great country. And it's something that I don't, I don't want to take for granted because I also have the experiences with other people, parts of my family that come from countries. Again, I have the luxury, like, because there's so much culture in my family. I have uncles from Venezuela, uncles and aunts, cousins from Africa, like straight from Africa, Ghana, family in Great Britain, like four continents. So really, I grew up with the world coming to me. And I really got to understand what's out there and what America is. I'm so grateful for it because it helps me be grateful for this country. It's not perfect, as I know means, but this, we're very, very fortunate to live in this country. Something like that attitude, gratitude is a really, is a really good key, as it says, being grateful for everything that comes and comes with it. And approaching it and saying, thank you, God, for another day that I will thank you, that I have an opportunity to, to make something of myself, you know? If you fall down, thank you, God, I can get back up, all right? So no matter what, finding, finding the reason to be grateful to, even in tough situations, even situations where you fall in and make that decision. To be grateful for the opportunity to even learn from this situation before that did kill you. It may have set you back a little bit, but it may have been for a reason. It's an opportunity to reset and do better. So that's another thing, don't see, see those, those failures and those, don't be afraid to fail. If you mess up, don't be, you know, be real with yourself, but don't be too hard on yourself, forgive yourself. See those failures as opportunities, a learning opportunity. So I never, I have a saying, I never, I'm, I'm either winning or, I'm either winning or learning. Meaning like, you know, it's like, a loss is a decision, you could choose, you could choose to take that loss or you could choose to learn from that. And apply it and move forward and get that, take that loss, use that loss as a lesson. Anything else?
How do you mean by that?
Keith.
Yes, sir.
Man, let me tell you something about your dad. Your, your dad, uh, he's probably one of the most beautiful people I've ever known. Very, and also, at, at, at a young age, your dad was very, very deep, he was a deep thinker. That's one thing I noticed about Keith, he was, he was a deep thinker, I mean, he laughed at stuff, but that was a surface, you know, he laugh and play, but I knew on the surface, he was a, he was a deep thinker. But I met your dad freshman year at Lee High School. He played football, he was a medical football player in Lee. Super athletic. Just naturally gifted in strength and speed. But we, we used to hang out all the time after school.
Yeah.
Keith was the only one at the time who had a car and a driver's license, I think.
Yeah. It came in focus.
We'd cruise around Baytown, you know, you know, not really being, just being too fourteen, not being too complacent. But just, just playing for fun, you know?
Yeah.
Driving around town.
Hanging out.
Yeah. Relieve the boredom and have fun and.
Play a little sports, video games.
Yeah, I play sports.
Basically what you do now?
Yeah, Keith has, I mean, you know, we were, I, I mean, I admire you for sitting out.
Yeah.
Somebody like me, it's like, I would never thought to, to reach out to somebody older and ask, ask them really deep questions. And I guess you're a trip off the old block to, to be such a good thinker and a, a, a fourth thinker. I really wasn't that person when I went to high school, I was, I was, I was just, I, I would sign myself as very tear-free. Happy, happy, though lucky, you know, in a lot of ways. But I've always had, I've always cared about people, I've never.
A definite friend for sure.
Yeah, I never, I never, I didn't like cliques, I didn't like the idea of cliques, so I never really.
Yeah, yeah.
I was never really clicking, I, I was friends with everybody.
Yeah, that's how I was, that's how I basically met you, it was like boom.
Yeah.
And then you, and then you like friends with that one, you was friends with that one, I said, hey, that's when we really started hanging out. Like you hanging out with all my friends, I'm just like, you know?
I never liked.
Hanging out with everybody.
And I guess, I mean, some of that comes from, I guess, younger times where not always coming accepted. And I didn't like to, I never, you know, I, I just grew up not, wanted to just think, it's like, I don't need to be accepted by a certain group. I'll find my own group, I'll, I'll find my own way. That's kind of how it was. You want to be friends with me, I'll be friends with you, I don't care what you look like, you're grown, but you want to be friends? So I mean, I was always a naturally friendly person and being with different people is kind of been my thing, so to speak. But that's how I met Keith, uh, through high school. And it was me, Keith, Sammy Allen, that was, that was kind of the, I mean, we, we wanted to click, but then, you know, we got together, that's who it was.
It was like through strongly through football. Yeah. Yeah, we was in the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, what's that, class of ninety-nine yearbook?
Yeah.
Actually, actually at my house, like, you know, in the front room playing the video games. Yeah, it was up in there.
I remember we went to the, uh.
Oh, yeah, even the prom.
We all hung out together, Josephada.
Man, like offensive, little, it was like offense and defense hanging out, basically.
Office, defense, hanging out. I mean, senior prom, we all remember, we rented the beach house and, you know, and Galison and cutting up Marlon Amy's. It was, a lot of us was, was, we were mostly, I guess when we got, went out, we went out as a football team.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Football team, we always went, you know, if you played football with us, you were good, for the most part, so.
Oh, Lee High School.
Lee High School, go game.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's some really fun memories, just asking me that question, kind of brought it back to me. Things that I've already got in here, I'll put on camera.
Exclusive.
Exclusive, yeah. I'm a private thing, man, but man, that was really, really, really good times. Again, I wouldn't have had those experiences in any way in any other city that I could have grown up in. Keith, Keith is one of those people and there's several people that, you know, the most of my family, they live on the East Coast and the way, so a lot of people, a lot of friends here, they're family. Baytown's so full of friendly people, it's like they take you in and there are people right now, but you know, I call brother, I call, I call Keith a brother. We may not hang out all the time, but it's like now, he called me and I'm there.
Yeah, it's still the same conversations, it'll be like, hey, what's up? It's still the same.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a special thing about Baytown, it's like, he's going to call me up, I'm sure, I'll, I'll come, I'll come out. Yeah, that's, they're one of the beautiful things about Baytown, I hope we can, hopefully we can preserve that, that sense of.
Togetherness.
Togetherness and being there for each other and looking out for each other and, hey, give me your job, you know, here, go over here. What, you know, what you need, helping each other out. Not, not necessarily giving each other handouts, but helping each other out. And that's, that's, that's a cool thing about this. My dad got helped out, you know? He never took your handout, but he took the help up.
Yeah.
Uh, my parents made a life here. Definitely want to, definitely, that's my motivation for, for observing things in this town is making sure people come here and make a life for themselves. What else? Which Baytown school do you think is the best sports wise? Right now, right now?
Which Baytown school is the best sports wise?
Right now, I have to say.
Big debate.
See, this is, this is slowly becoming a soccer town.
Yeah.
So I would, I would have to say Goose Creek Memorial. Okay, that's, they're, they're, they have a really good soccer team. Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly for their soccer team. I would like to see us get back to being a place where football can. About, you know, it's, it's a matter of demographics.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. The people, what the, what the students like. And so once they, we got to get them involved in it, how they excel.
Yeah, also, I mean, part of it too is, you know, new programs being more interconnected with the schools. Really, just people being, having more of an academic interest in, in, in sports in this town. And now there's a big opportunity to get back to that, the cities actually are going to make some things happen. And I hear, you know, Goose Creek and other entities are looking to bolster that in a lot of different ways. And I'm hoping that can happen. A lot of stuff on the, on the burner, but, but I would say out of the three, Goose Creek Memorial, unless you know better. Tell me, what do you?
Yeah, he on the inside. What did you say?
Cause I, I don't know, I haven't been, I've been out of there. Football is kind of like, because most of them aren't that good. Cause DCM, they go like one and nine.
Yeah. It was down bad. It was down bad.
Lee has been the most competitive in the last few years, but Baytown's saying a whole lot. I'd like to see them more competitive, they have, you know, it's, it's difficult because the talent really in Baytown is there, it's just so spread out.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely with the third school.
Yeah, with the third school.
Which was fair, you know? Cause they know that the future is going to work and the population is going to increase and so they're going to need that. But then, you know, you know, get there, like you say, it's probably, yeah, soccer. Soccer is good, soccer's fun.
See, the schools, yeah, that's what it is, it's not, it's not, it's not a numbers thing, because the schools have, they have a, a kid, it's just what the kids mentioned.
Yeah, yeah. There are a lot of talents, a lot of them just don't want to participate in the sports. They, you know, they're like, ah, you know? They can make it through academics, that's a, that's a good thing, you know? It's all about getting to college, going to college, you know, prepping for college and so, you know, education wise.
Also, what helps that too, though, is, is having more of a culture around football. As we speak, we just lost Optimus Football. Really detrimental for like kids who really can't afford to get started, or, or that kid who isn't sure about football yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But their parents, you know, you know, their parents don't want to spend all that money traveling and stuff if their kids aren't, they're not, they're just, some kids aren't sure if they want to play football.
Yeah.
Get them in Optimus and, you know, you're not spending a whole lot of money, you're not, you're not wasting your whole Saturday traveling.
Yeah, yeah.
To go play a football game, hotel and expenses for the kid not to play something that he, he don't even want to play at. So Optimus have was a great. So, Optimus have was a great avenue for that.
Yeah.
It's sad to see that goes. So, they lost that. And Optimus, I mean, if you really think about it, Optimus seen a lot of, a lot of great athlete football players came out of Optimus.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Training, yeah. Getting them focused, you know, once they slide into junior.
It's really sad to see them go. And I would like to see a board that, um, the school districts and maybe even the city can, um, make that connectivity between, um, you know, the use of football.
Mm-hmm.
Promoting, promoting that culture. Cause it's a culture thing. You can go to Katie, you know, these kids, you know, Katie High School, they're preparing for our houses. And these kids, these kids eat, sleep and breathe Katie football from the time they're six, seven years old and they play together their entire time. So, by the time they get to high school, they know each other, they know what each other, what each other likes to eat, where they like to go sleep, where they going to be. If they, they close, close their eyes to the football, they know, uh, their, that, their friends will be down there, you know, twenty yards down the road, down the field to catch the ball because they, they were playing with each other, because it's. That's what it would take, the same kind of city culture to, to use football.
Yeah.
For Baytown to, to be successful in that football, if they're not.
You have to have that general push.
I mean, you see those cities, I mean, South Lake Carols and Allens and even North Shore. North Shore has that kind of culture. It's different where they won't, you know?
Yeah, North Shore changed theirs over fast.
In those culture, they want to play football in North Shore. They, they start them out young. Even Crosby, Crosby like that. Crosby had a lot of success.
Mm-hmm.
Um, United States Championship visited a few years ago. If you can see it, those kids come up, they're wearing, they're wearing red and they have the Crosby stickers on them.
Pride. Cause it, cause it, yeah, cause it built them and they know it, you know? They know where it came from. Never forgot where they came from and their upbringing.
Cause U Y L, I mean, that, that Texas football bracket, you know, it's, it's stacked with teams. If you don't have that type of, that type of culture within your local businesses or cities, school districts, that, that support, then it's going to show.
Mm-hmm. It's like a Baytown alumni, basically, you know? Went to school here, you bet you can go somewhere else, but you come back.
You come back.
Like Romany Malco coming back, you know?
Come back and you build and, and you are still, that's why, you know, that's, that's what I would, I don't know how we're going to get there, but I'm open to the optimism. Really get people together and say, let's, let's, I mean, it's okay if you're, you know, you live in Lee's, get a strong district, let's, let's form a local league, you know? Hey, your Sterling kids play against our Lee kids and, and use your kids from a young age. You can turn it on, go all the way up. Maybe, maybe that's how a restructure that way might be to happen. I, I don't know, we'll see, you know? Maybe, maybe just give me an idea.
Yeah, yeah. That's how it starts.
Yep, it's an idea, but having the faith to, to put that idea in motion is, is, is.
Pretty awesome.
Who do you think is the best football player?
Best pla- football player in Baytown? Ever?
Ever. Wow.
Is it like best football player ever? In Baytown or just everywhere? Baytown? It's tough. It's tough. It's tough. I, I.
If you're going to judge it by like NFL success, uh, I would say Quentin Coria.
Yeah, okay.
I would say Quentin Coria.
Yeah. Absolute. That's who I first heard about, being from Baytown and going to NFL.
So.
Successful in NFL. Name known. Like, Texas A and M and all them, like, yeah, he was strong Texas. He was strong Texas.
I mean, he was basically, I felt so baffled. He, he was basically, if he intercepted, he intercepted the football on the coast with, in, in, uh, AFC championship, they would have played to the Super Bowl.
Mm-hmm.
But he dropped the interception.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I was like, oh, he, he could have been the guy. But he, he's definitely, I mean, he was one of those, one of those athletes that probably was on the cusp. Of a lot of greatness as far as NFL, his NFL success.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would, I would say he's probably the greatest. There's some great ones, but I'm wrong with you. Had a very big career in college.
Yeah, yeah. K State.
K State, uh.
I know Rocky's up there. Robert Bernard? From Sterling?
Yeah, Ro- oh, I forgot, Rocky.
Yeah, can't forget that fella. Big, can't forget big fella.
Can't forget Rocky. Probably the only one with the ring.
The only one with the ring.
Only one with the ring.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And he, and he, and he played with one of my favorite teams. I'm a New York Giant.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I took with me from New York is my fan, my fan base. That's the only thing else. The only thing else is I love Texas.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he, he won a ring as a Giant, so.
Sweet deal right there, boy.
Brian Johnson, he's a.
Yeah. I know he came up here to coach him.
He was more Crosby, but he went to Goose Creek to, uh, he's an office coordinator for, for Eagles. He won the Sugar Bowl, beat Alabama. One of the two things the team, for, for, for the decade to do, do that.
Yeah. He was dedicated. I know him, I seen him. He was dedicated for sure. Quarterback, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
He was a quarterback.
At least.
He was on the cover of College Football in two thousand four.
Hmm. He was a prime time player. They got video for sure. I can show you videos, Brian Johnson, so you can see what we're talking about. It's just a name to you right now, but yeah, you see him play, you see like a dedicated, you meet him, he's like a good kid. You know, when you want your kid to go to school and do the thing they need to do, that style right there. Like, he was like, you don't know him outside of anything else. Like, yeah, he got in there and handled business, you know? Made friends he needed to make and then boom, you know, and still carries on to this day.
And that's what it takes, extreme amount of focus, discipline. Now, even though, these are still things that I was still cultivating as an adult, is being more disciplined and, and, uh, not being focused and it takes self-awareness too, and knowing, knowing what you need to do to get better and knowing what you lack. Being honest with yourself. To die on self-eatery.
Mm-hmm. There you go.
Always be, don't, be the liar. Be the first person to ever lie to yourself.
Yeah.
Worst set of consequences is lying to yourself. So, always be honest with yourself. Be the person in there, what you need to do to grow, what you need to learn, and start there. What else?
Good question. A big debate.
A great question.
Think Bakken, didn't Bakken, cause I think, uh.
You should, you should like, you're really good interviewer. Be like a, almost like a social media.
Him and his friends are planning on, you know, getting into that.
Reporting, uh, journalism. That's what we're trying to do, journalism as well. We're giving a better review to some, some actual. What else you got?
What do you think, what do you think is the best NBA players as of right now?
As of right, see, I don't keep up too much of your reality. What's that young, that, that, I think he's a Serbian guy, big Serbian white guy?
Yeah, real good. I've seen him. I didn't know about him. I've seen the highlight, watched him. I like, yeah, yeah. He tearing him up. He's tearing him up. Nobody can stop him. Nobody can stop.
Time in NBA with that guy, man.
Yeah.
Looking a lot different. Uh, earlier on, I liked, uh, what's that gentleman, Pelicans, big man.
Zion.
Zion.
Williamson, yeah.
I liked him. He looked, seemed like he lost a little focus.
Yeah, he's trying to learn the game more, you know what I'm saying? Longevity. Cause he came in about that action and like wrecking and, you know? Everybody highlight, human highlight thing, you know? Almost how like LeBron was, you know what I'm saying? Going for the dunk. Kind of like Kobe a little bit, but not, you know, stretching it like that, but, yeah, he just got more focused on his longevity and his career and like how to strategize his plays and make, win championships. You gotta sit down and learn the strategies, because you're, you're, as a player, you're definitely going against coaches when she reaches a certain level.
And that's the other thing with this, to me, with the font you did play too, is not them individual, uh, words, but their ability to, to elevate the team around them. That would make Jordan so great.
Yeah.
You know, Jordan elevated everybody around him. He was, he was, imagine being so good, what you do that people around him, he's getting better. That, that's, that's probably the most inspiring thing about some of the top players. It's one thing to be good, like be great, to, to make your teammates be so good, to make your teammates go.
Who do you consider the GOAT?
Not the GOAT.
The GOAT?
Oh, NFL. In the NFL.
GOAT in the NFL?
I'm so torn with the question.
That's tough. That is tough.
I mean, the NFL's different because you have different positions.
Mm-hmm. Each one plays off the other. It's tough, it's tough.
You have to go, let's go by position. Because it is such a more of a team sport than basketball, where sometimes your GOATs, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm saying it's an offensive lineman. Offensive linemen are some heroes.
Hmm, hmm.
So, you gotta do it by position. So, by position, I see the GOAT and the quarterback, that's the top rate.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's, he, I mean, to go from one team to the other and win a championship again, like your brother next? Yeah, yeah, that's tough. Ain't nobody, I don't think nobody's doing that. Nobody does that.
The cut wide receiver has to be Jerry Rice.
Okay.
Offensive linemen, GOAT, that's a tough one, because they don't make, they don't put up statistics, right?
Yeah.
New, the statistics are kind of new for offensive linemen, it's like, they, they blocked.
Hmm.
But I would say Orlando Pace.
Yeah, big name. Uh, Rams?
Yeah, he went for the Rams. Yeah, he went for.
So, I remember seeing him.
Running back, I thought a running back, uh, Barry Sanders.
Yeah, didn't win the big one, but man, a- actual running back? Ferocious.
Yeah. If he had the right, offensive line of the right.
Ferocious. Yeah, you're offensive lineman, yeah, you know, it's like, man, if he had that, boy.
He did what he did without a top tier offensive line.
Yeah.
To run for two thousand yards, season in and season out without the offensive line, the right offensive line, just speaks hard.
Yeah. It's athleticism.
What level that guy could, whether, if he had the right one, he had the Cowboys offensive line.
Oh, oh. Rings, yeah, yeah, definitely rings, definitely rings. Easy.
What else? What else? What else? See linebacker, linebacker, Mike Seaton here. No, 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 Lawrence Taylor.
Lawrence Taylor, LT.
LT, linebacker. Safety, Ronnie Lott.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe Troy Paul Martin. You got free safety guard, you learn hands. Corner prime time.
Yeah, prime time for sure.
Defensive man, the minister, um, Jerry, Reggie, Reggie, uh.
Reggie White, yeah.
Defensive tackle, defensive tackle.
Is there, is, is, is J.J. getting up there on the, uh, status for D, D end? Like, left end, right end?
J.J. White, he, he could have played anywhere on the offensive line.
Yeah.
It depends on scheme. So, I know I'm liking that, he's, he's, he's running outside of him.
Mm-hmm.
But if he could move the defensive tackle, he'd definitely be one of the best.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Interceptions. That's why I was like, you know, hey, brother used to make interceptions at D end, that's tough.
Defensive tackle, nose tackle.
Yeah, yeah.
He's a plug of an A gap.
Beast. Beast.
Yeah, in football, it's all, it's, it's more position where you're in, I mean, my opinion, football's the ultimate team sport, you know? You gotta have everybody moving in one, in this.
And everybody's running into each other.
If one person messes up, the chances of that play goes, being successful goes down fifty percent.
Mm-hmm.
At least, which is, if one person messes up on, on a play.
Yeah.
Everybody has to do your job, you need to see, so. That's. On the best course for team.
There you go. The GOATs, the bonus. Not just one, twenty-two. I love them.
Everybody has to do everything at the same time. Any other questions?
Um, what do you think of the GOAT sport? GOAT sport, like the best one in football?
Best sport?
Best, best sport ever. Number two is baseball, I'm a. I think, I think made the league baseball season a little too long. We can't figure it out in a hundred thirty games and. It comes more of a front office thing, it actually becomes a level of skill.
Yeah.
It's all about who can manage and move money around and, because there's no salary cap, so it's, uh, it kind of, it comes with a money game. Then it goes about, about players on the field and the, the, the manager's ability to, to scheme. But college baseball's fun, cause it's less about that and more about the strategy and moving kids around, moving this around.
Mm-hmm.
What's the best college football?
First year in Texas home court. I didn't go there, but hey, man.
We knew about him. We knew about him. In Texas, we knew about him, bruh. Like Earl Campbell, bruh, they good, bruh.
You ask me what my, what my, if you ask me what my heart says, that's what my heart says. What my mind says, I mean, you gotta give Alabama the props.
Yeah, Nick Saban. Combo. Can't separate him. Like, it's Nick Saban. Shout out to the other guy.
The best college football team of all time, or I think one of the best college football teams of all time was in two thousand and one, Miami Hurricanes.
Yeah, okay.
They said every, every person that saw that team, not only went, went pro, but like Hall of Fame, talking about Ed Reed, the safety.
Ed Reed, yes, sir. The one that hurt the Texans' heart that year. Yeah.
Not, not every person, because what's that, what's their quarterback? He went pro. He had, uh, Glenn Dorsey. Quick quarters in the backfield, yeah, like, I mean, they had names, that, that defense. I think that's the best college football team of all time, football team.
Was that, that, Warren Sapp?
Warren Sapp was on that.
Huh? He was it on that? Which one was he?
He was like, like, early nine.
Okay, okay.
Nine to four, nine to five.
Okay, get my timing right. Best sports talk, period.
Yeah, I love sports talk.
That's why I don't say much on that thing. I know a whole lot.
I don't, I don't even watch college football.
What's your, what's, what do you think is a GOAT sport?
GOAT sport?
GOAT sport, tennis.
I'll probably have to put, it's a topic between basketball and soccer.
You like soccer, huh?
Yeah.
My parents loved soccer. They was up with a soccer player. Soccer, soccer could be fun to watch. You play soccer anywhere?
Yeah, what like for him? I'm trying to see if he, cause I know he's doing track, you know? Uh, he used to do, uh, basketball, ninth grade. He got, got injured or whatnot and right now, currently, he's like in a stage of where he wants to be like a coach, basketball coach. So, you know, that with a combination of teaching, you know, basically that lane, he's kind of bounced around ideas, you know what I'm saying, and what he want to do. So, we had him kind of just, you know, checking out different aspects of, uh, careers he could, you know, choose. You know, cause I think what, the first one, it was like chemist or something like that, sciences. Yeah. Then it was like with the journalism on that, you know what I'm saying? He was with that. And I was trying to give him ideas, cause I told him, like, just go for something that you already kind of doing.
So, you, so you were studying.
He kind of, yeah, he was kind of, yeah, yeah. Cause he kind of was with that, wanted to do the telecommu- telecommunications media studies. I think Texas A and M was the college he wanted to go to, you know what I'm saying? And so, uh, I found a little, little section of like, hey, you might want to do like sports analyst, if anything. Cause he'll talk so much basketball to me and I'm not a basketball player like that. Like, you know, and I don't even watch it like that, you know what I mean? To know what player's stats are this year, let alone two years ago. Like, you know what I'm saying? And he's running it to me. And I'm like, all right, you know, when he's talking to me, I'm like, okay. Like, you know what I'm saying, and he's running it to me. I'm like, alright, you know, when he's talking to me, I'm like, okay.
You know, when you, uh, when you come out of, when you come out of high school, you're looking for a summer job or something, look me up. I got some connections with the Baytown Sun.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, maybe get you on a string at covering your games.
Yeah.
Whatever, basketball games, whatever, whatever. Get some experience like that.
We can get on that ace out.
I talked to the sports area, Dave's like, I'm looking for trainers.
Hmm.
Somebody to, to help me cover sports.
Yeah. There you go. There you go. That's ideal right there to get involved in a community, cause we was talking with, uh, someone a little bit with, uh, Chantel Williams over there at Park Recreation and all that, you know, and, uh, trying to get more, him and more involved and say, like, with the, with the, uh, community service, basically, you know, volunteering for stuff and, you know, joining in. So I wanted him to understand more Baytown, cause he was more like, cause he stays with his mall. And so, you know, I come and get him this and that, and I'm working, so it's like a, real tight. But I wanted him to focus on, you know, giving out, you know, helping people out and also seeing what's out here in Baytown from different points in Baytown, you know what I'm saying, and so that's what I got with her. But that's one of the other persons I'm gonna speak to about things, and so. But yeah, you saying that is like sh- ideal, I mean, you know what I'm saying, with sports, cause I know that's something he just wanted to follow up in.
And yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's a good way to get out and build relationships. I met some, some, some great people.
Hmm.
Doing that, and that's, you know, it is so important to, to, to establish those solid relationships with, with sports riders. You're gonna go out there and have a great personality and, and, uh, you know, and you have big, it's a big responsibility, but you gotta make sure you tell the story right. You gotta make sure that, uh, you know, you're not burning anybody.
Hmm.
So, it's like, you tell the story right, you gotta tell the story, but you gotta, you gotta tell in a way that you're not really, you're not burning. It makes, it makes your life look bad.
Yeah, yeah. Being fair.
Tell the truth, yeah, fair. That's a good word, but fair, fair, fair reporting, so. It really, it's really something, I, I've seen, I've been around a lot of sports riders and riding stuff outside. They are, they are spot on, and they're very talented. Not just riding, but just the way they, their way with people. I really took them back.
Hmm.
And that's the, that's another thing about success, that when you surround yourself with great people, it's not gonna, don't wanna emulate, you know, wanna be exactly like them. You take in the good things that they do and be required to who you are. I'm out of that. A lot of, a lot of, uh, my development, um, just watching a lot of sports riders, just getting to challenge good men. Make connections, build relationships, uh, how they do. Disappointing that to who I, uh, the way God may need it.
Hmm.
You're gonna have a unique way, you're gonna have a uni- uni- unique way of connecting with people, you're gonna have your own unique style. Don't shy away from it. Don't try to be somebody tonight. And you take good, take good practices and, and, you know, behaviors and randoms and quiet, it'll just elevate you, elevate you. Always see that, always study people, how they, how they act and what, 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 what they're doing to, you know, that makes what they're doing. Find, find the best, find, find, look for the best person in whatever field around you and see what they're doing. And usually when you look at it, when you realize it, it's really not a whole, it's not really complicated, it's really they're doing simple things.
Yeah.
But they're doing what other people aren't doing. But to take it, you see, you can take the time and do it, do it the right way. Yeah, I mean, I, I sat down with somebody, I was like, bud, I thought he was gonna give me this, this complicated trash course.
Hmm.
But it was, it was, it was simple. He went through everything one by one.
Hmm.
And he's like, yeah, there's no shortcuts around, around it.
Hmm.
You know, just taking the time, doing those little things.
Hmm.
Oh, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's not hard, but it's not complicated, but it's simple, one by one, and ask yourself, ask your questions. And it's quite, it's quite as asked.
Yeah.
Simplify.
Yes, sir. Don't overcomplicate naturally.
What else you got? You know?
What are one of your favorite fashion places?
I feel kinda guilty talking about fast food. I'm trying not to, trying not to. Man, I love, I love these, some, uh, some Popeyes.
Love that chicken from Popeyes.
I guess one of my fashion, favorite fashion place, really, not really Popeyes, but it's a place I haven't gone in a long time, but I don't wanna overdo it. I like Sun Burger in Baytown.
Yeah.
They have a run of the Sun Burger. C and D, y'all know that's fast food, but C and D is.
I would say, I mean, it's the same, it's right there. You're not waiting, you're not waiting long, it's right there, it's ready to make, you know what I'm saying, boom, boom. You know what I mean? So I'll consider it fast food. It's not the generic fast food, like burgers and, you know, drive-through, you're not drive-through in C and D's.
Right, but it is, it's, it's a fast dog.
Yeah.
But I like.
Yeah, well, we go get it real fast, back in the day, you know. At Lee High School, right up the street.
What else?
What are one of your hobbies?
One of my hobbies, um, one of my hobbies, of course, is like sports, football. I like, I'm a gun enthusiast, so I like doing some shooting range. And I got a couple of guns I like to, like to fire off and do manly stuff.
There you go.
What else? I love board games, play the chess. I love to read. Some of the, some authors I like to read, I like to read Thomas Sowell. I like reading, uh. Anyway, Thomas Sowell, I've read, read some, I've read, read some Mein Kampf, I've read a lot of sociological books. I like reading books on civics and government, uh, social, social books, books on society and, uh, economics, things like that. Informational books, history books, I love history. So World War Two, this, uh, I like going to different museums and parks. Been to, uh, several, um, World War Two sites, of course, Bountiful Texas, I've been to Lexington, I've been, I've been on to Arizona and Hawaii, that was a profound. You ever heard of Arizona? You ever said Arizona? That was a sh- that was a ship that was sunk there in World War Two on Pearl Harbor, that, you ever heard of Pearl Harbor? So Pearl Harbor, the, uh, the, Arizona was stationed there, Japanese on it, and everybody on board that was in it, they died on the ship. Saying, nobody can get to them, they're cut them out.
Hmm.
Where that ship, that ship, that ship was never pulled up out of the ground at Pearl Harbor.
Hmm.
Basically, it's during the, the, the people, you know, sailors on that ship, final break zone. So.
Sheesh.
It's a very profound, uh, place, you know, I recommend it if you can go, I know it's worthy. Uh, don't let anybody pull you, you could be a while, you're on a pretty big budget. You just gotta be smart and not, gotta get caught in tourist craps.
Hmm.
And everything, all the outdoor stuff is pretty cheap, so. Back in two thousand nine, I went there and that was a very, a very, very, uh, profound part of my trip, I'll speak on that. Really gave me an appreciation of, of, you know, what people fought and died and served our country for. What else?
What are some of your favorite movies to watch?
My favorite movies, I love gangster movies, The Godfather, uh, Trilogy, I like, uh, oh, so I, um, uh, Donnie Brasco. I don't know, I was like, I don't know why, but it's like the action movies, the party, um, I like World War Two movies. I like action movies, uh, The Avengers, I watch the movies, Black Panther, that was very good. Yeah, definitely, definitely the Marvel movies, like we were watching.
Yeah, this guy, Spider-Man, this guy.
Yeah.
That's his guy.
Yep. I get Marvel, I, I, I like watching. What else? That it?
I'm ready to get a drink. Get one of these, one of these things up here. What did you get?
I got that Mocha Cookie, Crunchy Cookie.
Crunchy Cookie?
Yeah.
Mocha Crunchy Cookie?
Mocha Cookie, yeah, it's a cold drink, it's hot.
Oh, yeah, it's too hot, I have to do the hot stuff. Pass out.
I put a shot of espresso on it to wake myself. I, I, I took a, I took a time off today, it was kinda, I had a long week, you know, I, I.
No doubt. Summer preps? That's good. Appreciate you, you know, conversating with my kiddo, man, you know.
I feel honored.
Focus on the fellow, you know.
To do that.
Yeah, yes, indeed.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda surreal that I'm, that someone would reach out to me and say, hey, talk to my kid about something.
Yeah, yeah, eh.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
When it hit me, boy, I was like, oh, man, that's great. I was like, oh, man.
It hits you.
Oh, man, yeah, grill.
Really, it's just, I'm just a servant.
Hmm.
And that's all I see myself as, I'm still grill. Give back to the, to the city that's given, that was there for my family, that's the reason I'm not a statistic on the street.
Yeah.
I could have been. I had some bad, I had some bad ways about me that I had to fix. And if I had, I had those bad ways about me and you looked, I fought the kids.
Hmm.
But thank God, thank God for grace and mercy and redemption and. Just look to be an asset to my community.
Definitely that, definitely that. Baytown proud, man.
Baytown proud.
Alright, I'm gonna go get me something to drink, man, get me some snack, eh, we can just freestyle after this.